Downboard motorcycle meeting in order for Thursday, December twenty seventh. We have two sets of minutes, gentlemen, we have the regular minutes which were amended. Do I have a motion, Dave?
Sure, I'll make a motion for the regular meeting that's December twentieth, twenty eighteen, as amended.
So, any further discussion of minutes? Good job, gentlemen, thank you as always. All in favor?
Aye.
I'll abstain over the next seven days. I'll make a motion to approve the non-public minutes of December twentieth, two thousand and eighteen. I don't, it wasn't amended.
I can second what's done.
Eight forty-four P M.
At eight twenty-four P M.
I'll second that, bud. Discussion on minutes needs one more. Okay, all in favor then?
Aye.
Aye.
I'll abstain.
You don't want to sit close to them, bud?
No, those will be sealed, bud.
Close enough.
Yes, same room.
No, it cost that way or this way.
Because they went, they went transcranial.
This is the one here, right?
She stayed here.
I was there for lunch.
We do, okay, I stand corrected. Those are the wrong page.
It's on the front page.
Oh, you gotta, you gotta laugh a little bit. Kinda sucks.
Those don't have to be sealed. All these years is having on the paper cut, yeah, so.
Okay, I will open up for public comment, if you have comment, please state your name for the record, we got paperwork here, I'll start with Leo.
Hey, Lee Martel, I do have something.
Go ahead.
Well, not so good, but. You know, I spoke to the chief about this, I spoke to two of you selectmen about this, only in conversation, but. You know, on our road, this is, it's been, it's so busy now, it's busier than ever, with the new, all the new homes in the back, and all the contractors going up there, and all the deliveries and everything. It just go way too fast. This afternoon, I was out there, and I'm out there, I'm retired, so I'm out, I'm home most of the time, and I'm outside lots of times, you know, a lot of the time. And I see this all the time, but this afternoon in particular, FedEx, FedEx and UPS are really bad, but FedEx went by, he had to be at, doing at least forty-five.
On that dirt road?
Oh, on that dirt road, I swear. Yeah, I mean, I could hardly even see him go by, and he was ahead of the dust ball. So, you know, there's a little boy that walks up that road, you know, the bus, the bus won't take that road, won't use that on the route because it's, they said it's too dangerous.
Is there a posted speed limit on that road?
From what I understand, it's thirty-five.
Yeah, the default speed's thirty-five. Okay.
I think thirty-five is way too high for that road.
I, I, what do you suggest, I, I would suggest coming to a sting operation there, or another?
Well, you know, because, you know.
Not sting, but.
I'm sure there's parts of it that aren't so bad, I guess, but when you get down towards, you know, past the power lines coming towards thirteen, it narrows right down.
Sure.
And I guess people figure they can see straight way down there, and they just bomb it, and in the summertime, there's a canopy there, so it is hard to see sometimes. Arlene Little walks that road, there's a little boy who's about eight or nine years old, he has to walk to thirteen and back for school, you know, then there's kids up the road. It's, I just think, I, you know, I think it's just way too fast on that road, and, you know, I hear now Purgatory Pond Road is down to twenty-five all of, already, and that one's like way better than our road.
Absolutely, yes.
Way better driverable, way more driverable, so.
Chief, what do you suggest?
Well, I think we could get together, get together with Lee, try and narrow down the time, and it would be most fruitful to have somebody there, because you, you can't be there all day, all night.
Oh, absolutely correct.
If we can narrow down the time when we can be effective, we'll have somebody down with radar, and we'll do two things. See if we can confirm the speeds, a lot of times on those types of roads, the, the traffic looks like it's going a lot faster than it actually is, it's just, it's just the, the way it appears, so that's not uncommon, but if we can measure it, and he may very well be right, they could be doing thirty-five.
Yeah, you know.
Measure with radar and, and find out, and then we can address, if, if, if it's the same delivery people, if we can address them individually, we can resolve the problem.
Yeah.
Once and for all, it'd be done with it.
Okay, why don't we, why don't we revisit that, I'll leave it, take it for action for the next forty-five, sixty days, and then we'll revisit it.
You know, the other thing with that is that, number one is, I know what you're saying, it does seem like it's more, but we drive the road all the time, and we always look at the odometer, and we say, well, we're doing twenty, and we end, you know, we, so we understand what's going on.
I'm not arguing with you about what we're seeing, I'm just saying that.
So, the other part of that whole thing is, you keep trying to mitigate this dust problem, and if people went slower, it'd be a little easier on everybody, you know?
Well, we, probably have the chief take a look at it, but, you know, you may come back with a recommendation, maybe you could make that road thirty a, miles, an hour.
Thirty's not much better.
And post it.
Why pick Purgatory Pond twenty-five, but that one's gotta be thirty-five? There's more traffic on that, our road, I'll tell you. I will be revisiting this when Jeff brings up for his road, uh, meeting, special meeting.
Put man in the road.
Oh, yeah, I will bring this up, and I will talk to the people, more of the people on the road, but so far, everybody on the road's in agreement that this is ridiculous.
The speed limit?
Yes. Well, the, the people are going by way too fast.
Okay, why don't we just revisit, we'll, we'll be, look at this as an investigatory.
And if, and if thirty-five is what they're doing, then that's too fast for the road, I'll tell you, because I can see, nobody can get out of the way on our end, because nobody can get out of the way.
Chief, will you take that fact for the next forty-five, sixty days and take a look at it?
Yeah.
And then, and then it may be too late in the winter, it may be worth a lot to look at in the spring, too.
Well, again, if, if, if the big issue is really deliveries, those we can, we can speak, those individual, limited group people.
Okay.
Resolve it, and, and take care of the bulk of the problem, if it's much faster than that, usually, you find out a lot of those types of roads, that, you know, once you stop looking in, and you start people, you find out it's really people that live on the street that.
Okay.
That you have the issues with.
Well, why don't we get back from factual point of view, and we'll just take a look at that, so noted.
Can we, can we talk, talk tomorrow, and just kind of give me some more details, and we'll, we'll see if we can, we can find out.
Yeah, sounds good to me.
I do, anything else?
Nope, that's, thank you.
I think, I think it should be visited twice, too, because in the springtime would be another time when the road is even clearer.
Hey, I'm all for as many times as you wanna go visit, guys.
Okay, chief. Late spring. Chief, you good? You're good, you're on, you're on the agenda tonight? Chief? You're on the agenda, too, Woody, you're on the agenda, come on up, you're next.
Jen, did you know it's Tane Hill Road that he was talking about, the speed limit?
I did not, but thank you.
I'll make a motion per R S A, thirty-one, full of ninety-five, Jack, three, room number three, paragraph B to accept the donation. Lean, we have the fifty dollars?
We do.
And the amount of fifty dollars for the race across Dunbar.
Sir, good. Any discussion, gentlemen?
Nope.
All in favor?
Aye.
It could happen. Okay.
Solid waste and exposure budget?
Absolutely. Let's go right into it. And just, uh, let you, this is a information gathering for the budget, we might, we'll make a decision, and as far as the actual budget, then a delivery, delivery session, then a run. So, you before, tell us about your budget there, Woody.
Hey, basically, on my budget, we'll go down through it, but I try to keep it as closest to my last year budget as possible. So, we start off with a full-time, that indicates a two percent raise. Part-time, that's a two percent raise there as well. The overtime, put a dollar across it, just so that line's there. Equipment rental, I kept it the same. Training, this year, we went way over what we would've normally spent. So, next year, I'm gonna, I rent, I made it a hundred dollars more, so instead of seven hundred, it's eight hundred, that should cover us training-wise, and, uh, I'm not going to the conference this year, so that'll, that was one of the reasons, and I'm not sending the custodian to the conference either, so I should keep it right in the line there. For subcontractor services, I kept the same.
Does that haul in whatnot, or?
Well, yeah, it's if I need another truck to come in, or for whatever reason, you know, I have to have outside contractor come in, that.
Was it, didn't we use that a little bit this year when you were on vacation?
We did, but we were able to, it was when the truck was down, we were able to actually take out of the monies that were set aside for that truck.
Right, because it was a warrant.
Right. Uh, maintenance, I dropped that, uh, from fourteen thousand down to ten, um, and my reasoning on this is, I'm gonna have some maintenance issues coming up this year. One is with the skid steer, um, I've already had the mechanic look at it, he's gonna need to tear it apart, and it's got a hydraulic leak internally someplace. He's looked at it twice now, and he said it's gonna be one of these jobs where he's gonna have to actually take the machine apart, he's gonna have to have it for at least a day, um, and try and find where the leak is, um, and that's gonna be some labor intense there. I have a couple of issues with, uh, some bailers right now. One of them, they're probably not gonna get taken care of this year, so it's gonna end up being something for next year. The scale, I actually broke the scale yesterday, um, the guy's coming, we can try and get it done tomorrow, if not, that's gonna go into the next year. And I have a check engine light on my, on the Mac, which is indicating, um, I had it checked out, um, it's looking like some injector issues. The last time, uh, we had it done, it was in the thousands to do injectors on that truck.
Well, you're back on your scale, um, if you have an estimate to repair that scale, we, we could probably encumber that out of the.
Yeah, she, she and I talked about that this afternoon.
You're gonna be on the funds there, that we should try and do that.
Even if the work's not done, we can put money.
Right, right.
Long as we have the estimate.
Um, department equipment, I dropped that to a thousand, um, looking at getting another pallet jack, and, uh, portable heater of some sort, a portable heater we had, only lasts about a year and a half, maybe two years, um, and it, I took it to Dunbar Fuel Service, and Jared said it was more to fix it than is to buy another one, so, we're gonna end up getting something different. The telephone.
Well, on the maintenance side, you don't think you're shortchanging yourself by coming out, we only, you dropped it from fourteen to ten, you think ten's enough?
I think it'll be, I think we can work within that, because if you remember, thirty-one hundred or thirty-six hundred of that was the tires for the skid steer.
And that's already.
Yeah, that's already taken care of, I think we'll be fine.
Okay.
And you're gonna have a new truck, not an old truck to repair.
Right, and that's the thing, we won't have the old truck to repair, so, I, I'm thinking we'll be fine then.
Estimated delivery of the new truck?
It hasn't even hit the production line yet.
Okay.
When I talked to the salesman, second week of January, there's tentative date for being built.
Okay. I, I only heard rumors, you're taking the old truck in for some work, to keep it going.
Yeah, I have to, but the thing's skipping, like no tomorrow.
Okay.
And it's got a bad wheel bearing in it.
Gotta keep it running for at least another couple of months.
Exactly.
Okay. Telephone you want, I'm sorry.
Telephone is up four dollars per month on our charge, I called and checked with the phone company this morning, um, they said it's gonna be about a four dollar a month increase on it. That's why that one, that one's up. The next line is uniforms, that's up, I upped it from five hundred, uh, up, up five hundred from four thousand and forty-five. In that line is also where we get our shoes for the employees. This year alone's gonna be a thousand and fifty dollars with the current staff just for shoes, so if you take that out of there, drops it into the, oh, just round numbers, call it thirty-five hundred dollars. And we're looking at, if the staffing stays the way it is, we're gonna be five to six of us in uniforms, that's gonna eat that up pretty quick.
Yeah, not all that, the turnover in boots, you're buying new boots for people.
Exactly. So, I'm comfortable with that right there, I think we'll be fine, because if you do have a turnover.
Right.
Uh, then you won't be putting them in uniforms.
Right.
So, it's kind of a wash there.
Okay.
The mobile phone, I kept the same. Fuel costs, I went through, and it's up two hundred dollars, went through and figured out how much fuel I used, and tried to use some rough numbers, everybody know that fuel's a rough cost. I'm gonna have some additional truck in this year, um, looks like I'm gonna be making some loads to Keen with our glass. So, gonna have a little extra fuel usage over what we did this year, so, that's, I just went up a couple hundred, I think we'll be fine. Dash lab and testing, keep that the same, fees and services, there's a dollar there just to keep that line open. The big one next is, is M S W, this has incineration, but it's, we don't incinerate anymore.
Should I change that name?
You could. According to our contract, our price goes up, uh, three dollars and two cents a ton this year. In this line, we're having some changing with some recycling that's gonna start going in the trash. One of the plastics that we were doing, the N R A can no longer move it, you know, um, so we ended up, well, putting eight, nine, nine tons of it in the trash. So, looking at the cost, over the course of the year, how much we actually made of it, it's gonna end, it's increased tonnage, so that's why that line is up considerable. Having said that, there's also some glass product that they're not gonna take anymore, in the glass, so that's gonna end up going in the trash, which is heavy, gonna jump the weight up some more. The next line is your.
Can I interrupt for one second? You still have outstanding bills on the M S W, correct?
Oh, yes, I have outstanding bills on M S W.
That's actually through today, but there are some outstanding bills that come in at the end of the year.
So, it's gonna be probably closer to sixty-three?
Correct.
Well, I'm pretty sure on that one. Uh, the next one is your, uh, construction and demolition, with the contract, that's up three dollars and twenty-one cents a ton. Same thing there, I kept the tonnage amount about the same as last year, we're not gonna deliver quite as much, but in this up and coming year, uh, where you're, like, for instance, your fossil and toilets and your sinks were going in to glass, they're now going in to demo, everybody knows how a toilet weighs like ninety pounds, so, you're gonna have an increase now in your demo. But I think we'll be fine tonnage-wise, I think we'll be fine there. Hazardous waste collection, that's up five hundred, I have, I think there's seven, eight thousand dollars worth of bills that just came in for hazardous waste. So, I know it looks only sixty-seven hundred there, but there's like seven thousand in bills coming in.
Oh, that's gonna come.
Yeah, yeah, I spoke with Lean and their, Allison will have on Monday, I just barely got them, um, and in that, I have some increases coming, I just don't know what the increases are gonna be.
So, you put it, five hundred just to cover?
Just hopefully, there's a little difference between what we spent, it's probably about fifteen hundred between what was budgeted and what was spent, but I don't know what the increases are gonna be. When your electronics and the fluorescent tubes and all that, that's not. But the last one is the N R A dues, I called them just to check the number, and they said, use the same number as last year, which was one ninety-four, so it's not, one ninety-four's what it's giving me.
Okay. Any questions?
No, I think that's a good job going through that.
All right.
Thank you, Lean.
A lot, sir.
Oh, boy, he penciled his out.
I know.
Emergency management, one of the two thousand, is that accurate? Okay, so, everybody has.
Want to use my eraser?
Okay, again, fire chief level funding, um. First lines.
Two percent.
Yeah, yeah, put the two percent in there, three hundred dollars, really figure that out, about twenty people, that's fifteen dollars, or eight, maybe. Administered, my, uh, my salary isn't all of that, the inspections that I do, um, during the year in there, I do foster care, wood stove, oil burner, safety, a lot of those are mandated by the state, so the fire department to do, so that's why I end up in my.
Your section?
My section.
Do you, do you personally, are you responsible for all of them, or do you have, do you let some of the, uh, phone to yourself to you?
I do.
Okay.
Again, does the, the Lord allows you designate someone in your department? You know, I'm the authority having jurisdiction in town Dunbar, when it comes to codes, um, there's only one town that I know of. Sign that over to the building department, problem with doing that is, fire chief has absolutely no authority in the town on any kind of code issue whatsoever, which leaves the scheme, it's kind of tied when it comes to.
Makes a little more sense to have the fire chief do in the fight.
Yeah, exactly. Training will be the same, you know, we pay outside agency coming to do our training every bimonthly, which has worked out good, this is the first full year we did it. Paying for some people's E M T classes, refreshers. Mutually is, is up a little, uh, it's the first year, it's actually the smallest increase we've had in over ten years, it's only up four hundred and eighty-three dollars. And the reason that is that we've had another town in the compact, we took Washington. In this year, so there, what they pay helps offset the cost.
How many towns in that mutually?
Twenty-two towns, two ambulances, and one hazmat unit, so. There's three town ambulants, and there's kind of a cross, but it actually aren't towns, but we dispatch them, so, we, they have to be listed. And C one coordinator, he's done a really good job keeping his budget, above what the last two years, the compact still continues to get grants, help cover radio costs, they're starting to dry up. We haven't been putting a lot of money in our cap reserve, like we should, but, we're putting up in just to cover the car when I need to replace, like every ten years. The biggest cost in that fee is, is salary and insurance, we, the dispatches are all employees of City Pocket, we pay their wages.
Okay.
So.
Yeah, we pay an even amount, or is it by our population or something?
Yeah, the formula we use, population and property evaluation.
Yeah.
Uh, we're trying to get fifty-fifty split, we've been working those figures down for a long time. Problem with Dunbar is, our property evaluation is way up there this year, so we, you know, we actually pay more than other towns that have less population, have less calls.
Because of our property value.
Evaluation, we have the highest increase in the compact this year for, uh, property evaluation, so. Yeah, I always compare ourselves to Chi Chester, which just drives me crazy, look at the commercial growth, the Chi Chester, and Reap Fork. They have more commercial buildings, you know, obviously, we don't have any, they have twice as many cars as I have, and they pay less than dispatches, so.
And it all goes off our property values?
Yep, property evaluation.
Residential property values?
Use the state's.
Combination.
Formula.
Yeah.
And we looked at runs compared to population, because we're saying, well, if my town's only doing three hundred runs a year, and Chi Chester's doing five hundred runs a year, but we played with the numbers and population, and with the runs, and they come out basically equal, and it's a lot easier to get the population figure than it is runs, because it's just.
So, years of.
Mutually, if you look at another town that's not actually charged to that town, it can be confusing extracting those numbers, but anyway, so, like I said, fee, I, we can't control.
Yep.
So, but luckily, this year was, like I said, the smallest increase we've seen for a while. Gas and diesel, those are always figures you just kind of estimate, we get them pretty close this year. We do have another gas vehicle for this full year, we didn't have before, that forestry used to be diesel, now we have gas, so we have three gas vehicles, and we used to have two. Office supplies, I don't know if that got recorded in the right category sometimes, because the station supply is way over, and the office supply is under, so. They're kind of close together, when I, when you get paid, sometimes they come along. Phones, pretty close on the phone. Line, mobile phone, that's up a little bit, we added our new defibrillator this year, that takes another.
Cover one.
Okay, another line, so, yeah, we transmit E K Gs and stuff, so, yeah, that's close enough, not bad for just that. Climate maintenance, um.
You're down.
That will be gone at five thousand by the end of the month, I just put some tires on the ambulance, uh, I haven't got my bill yet for all our truck services, all the engines serviced, well-changed and greased, he hasn't, hasn't done yet, and I'm gonna use some of that money to buy clothes racks that would actually deliver today. I had ordered them back in September, and they came today by freight, so. Dues, I'm not sure why that's down. They belong to the National Association of Fire Chiefs, State Fire Chiefs Association, those things, uh, which actually is a benefit N F P A, uh, you know, we have access to codes, and, you know, it's a bonus to belong to some of those organizations. Free to repair, again, you know, never know, pages, I just submitted a bill today, I bought three new pages, which was around thirteen hundred dollars. It's kind of crazy that it's almost cheaper to buy new pages and repair them, I sent three out, and nobody repairs them anymore, they get shipped out to Mexico, and when they get to Mexico, they basically, all they do is put a new circuit board in, send them back, charge you.
Do the pagers operate off your phone bill also, or how's that work?
It's separate.
They are?
Just, yeah, reactivated through dispatch, someday, they're gonna be obsolete, and everything will be done through your phone. Technology's going that way, but, uh, we still need to be notified, dispatch, but again, Polarrol is the leading brand of pagers, and, you know, their costs are up there, but like I said, you can't find anybody to sit down and do benchwork on pagers, it just doesn't seem right, but that's the way it is. Uh, that fee is one, that, we're supposed to be switching our, getting the software switch over to our fire reporting, our national fire reporting, and if it did get done this past year, so hopefully, you know, we need to leave that in there, get that done.
That's your software fees?
Yeah.
Okay.
We have to, you know, nationally register, all our alarms have to go into a national database, so. Protective gear, that's up, uh, I try to buy two sets of gear a year, um, gear is very expensive, the price of coats have just gone up, uh, quite a bit, so two sets of gear now is almost three thousand dollars, um, I end up buying, had some, firefighters need some new boots, uh, boots, I'm gonna purchase more boots in that figure, clothes and those kind of protective gear, it's expensive, so.
You're okay keeping it at ten, though?
Yeah. Uh, subscriptions, pretty close. Fire prevention is up, I kind of bumped that up to two hundred, that, most, that money all goes to the school, Dunbar School, uh, when we do fire prevention over there. Obviously, there's more students in school now, or in the past, so, once you hit that two hundred mark, when you purchase things, it bumps you into another.
Category.
Category, you have to buy either another head bulk, or you have to break it down, and, so anyways, their population's up, and that, but I said, that money goes, it's well worth it, but we can, we can get every student in the school, educate the students, and that's a payoff right there. Fire repair, we do grass mowing around them, brush cutting, um, but some of the fences got knocked out from snow plowing, and, uh, those chain link fences really need to get some repaired on, until.
Trees.
Do some, oh, yeah, trees, it's, it's quite a project trying to keep them, uh, keep them up, but some of them just basically need some new fittings to hold the top rails on, and some of the posts have been, but they really need to be, uh, addressed.
Are those some of the fences around, on, something?
Yeah. You know, town responsibility, once we've accepted the one.
Right.
Um, that's a town expense. Obviously, Sistern don't have them, and some of the ponds don't, but all the, all that dry, everyone's needing one. Obviously, a safety issue. Ambulance expenses, you know, that's for our oxygen, some supplies we have to buy, we do get, still are able to get some through the hospital, but like everybody else, they're trying to cut back on supplies, but you can get through them, so, that's pretty close, actually, we just submitted a couple more bills this week on some stuff, so that'll be, that'll be gone, and then the paramedic in the sec, uh, again, just a crap share, how much you're gonna, how, how many you're gonna have, and we do have our own paramedic, fees around sometimes, these can save us that, that cost, I do have another bill coming in from, from Bo, we used them a couple of weeks ago, uh, for an in the sec. So, again, that, you know, it's, looks like we don't use that fee, but some years it's going, some it isn't, so. Anyways, that's it.
And emergency management is a.
Emergency management, yeah, it's kind of a slush fund, we always keep in there in case, we do have to open up the emergency operations center, Fire Pool, uh, it's kind of what it was used for, but. Uh, it's kind of what it was used for, but I used to buy a portable radio with there, yeah, but that doesn't co- cover the cost of the portable radio anymore, so. Uh, we've been using that money to maintain the generators, help pay for that cost. Fire station generator and the school generator, you know.
Did they get all their maintenance done this year?
Yep.
Good.
Get some extra on the fire station one.
Yeah, so it's probably use some more.
Yeah, batteries, they recommend a load test, so they actually run it under load, because they don't, actually, this fire station one gets run more than the, the school one under load, but.
Lot of questions?
Nope.
Do you want to have this, um, you'll be doing the warrant article for your capital improvements again?
Yep, ask him for the money, going everywhere.
Okay.
For an engine in the future.
All right.
Um, other than that, shouldn't be any big surprises.
So last year was forty thousand dollars, that's what you asked for.
Truck's due in twenty twenty-one, but, I don't know, it's still in fairly decent shape and, uh, you know. It's not costing us anything, it's, we might be able to pull on that a little bit and get some more money in the bank before we actually have to make the purchase and then.
That was a, is that a used vehicle? That was a used vehicle?
No.
That was brand new?
And then there's some other things thrown around maybe, uh, you know, replace two trucks with one, that's an idea that's, we're thinking about, because, you know. One less vehicle to maintain, you buy one big engine tanker, pumper, some towns that go on that route and. You have one less driver when you need an emergency, you don't need two people, you have that cost, but our big tankers, that's already eighteen years old, that's a two thousand. Tanks, no, about thirty years old, the tanks having some issues, so, and that's something to look at. You know, the cost would be more, but you're replacing two trucks with one, you know, so we're kind of looking at maybe.
Maintaining one after that.
Right, that's an option that could be considered, so.
Build it large enough to house a bigger truck?
Oh yeah, we can get it, squeeze her in. But, and then the ambulance deal, I mean, you know, at some point in time in the near future, we're gonna have to maybe look at. How we man our ambulance, uh, and if the calls keep increasing, uh, that's our biggest challenge down the road. Right now, Dunmarten's the only town in Jappal area, Mutual Aid, and the only town probably in Southern New Hampshire that runs a volunteer ambulance. Every town in Jappal area has a staff ambulance, or they have a contract with a town. For example, Warner and Webster are covered by Hopkins, and they have a contract with Town Hopkins, and they pay Hopkins then. So much easier to cover their ambulance service.
So two man, two, two ma- made by two people?
Yeah, but they still respond, you know, the first responders, but the actual transport's done by Hopkins then. Panachuk Rescue covers Canterbury, Boscombe, Salisbury, Tri-Town, covers Pembroke and Allstown, they'll pay a fee for ambulance service.
Any idea what the fees run?
They're pretty steep.
But it's a third party, a third party.
They're between sixty and a hundred thousand a year, so.
Per town, per?
Per.
Per town, yeah.
I know, one of the chiefs I've been talking to, because his, he's come by one of those services, his, his bill keeps going up, so. Just like, uh, he has some looking to buy their own ambulance and go on that route, but he, uh, you know, he's been playing with the figures. I can buy the ambulance, they already have one full-time firefighter, so they had fires, a second one or per diem one, uh. But that's, you know, that's the way people are going, uh, you know, Washington just joined the compact, they have eleven hundred people in Town Washington. And they have their ambulance staff during the day, because there's nobody in town. They had three people, and then one moved or quit, and they had two people.
They're going to your train.
Yeah, the only people they had in Town Washington, they're going to ambulance. So if one person went down the store and.
You're basically down for the.
They couldn't get out, so they, they finally just, they hire per diem people just during the day hours, on the other days, uh.
How much longer is our ambulance good for?
Our ambulance?
Yeah.
Well, it's a two thousand ten, so ambulance is a, the most used vehicle, so we try to get twelve years, um, fifteen years.
I heard in retirement, Bo was complaining that when they have so many over fifty-five residents, it's like retirement communities.
Oh yeah, they just.
They just.
Taxes the, your ambulance right out. You know, with Dunmarten, unfortunately, we're down to six people, I have six people during the day that I can draw on. Three more shift work, so I don't know if they're on during the day or not, takes two people to transport on the ambulance, so that leaves you. You know, if five people are out town during the day, we can't get the ambulance out, there's one person left. You know, a lot of times if we have two people, you know, two licensed people and we have some firefighters around, but, you know, it's just getting to be. It's getting harder to get people trained and people that can go to calls, you know, uh.
And what do you do if you can't get yours, are you calling another one?
Yeah, Bo is our automatic backup. If we don't get out after a second rethon, the whole compact's like, well, yeah, you get, if we don't respond in four minutes. They rethon us, if we don't respond another three minutes, which would be seven total, they stop automatic. So we do have backup, Bo is our backup, but the problem with Bo is they're so busy now, uh, if they're out. They've been, didn't go to Hopkins then, or another Mutual Aid town.
Bo only has one ambulance?
They have two, one, one staffed, but, uh, you know, their, their calls are increased like everybody else. You know, fortunately, we're surrounded by, every town that surrounds us has full-time ambulance people, but we has got per diem people. But they're staffed now, seven days a week, actually, they've just bumped up to ten o'clock at night, so. Uh, we're kind of, you know, in the middle of all these full-time departments around us, so we're pretty good shape for, for backup. But as we get busier, you know, we're gonna be calling on them. This year, we've called on, um, ambulances, Mutual Aid, over ten times, which is all ten percent of our calls, which is more than we've ever called in before. Just because we haven't been able to get our ambulants out and staff. You know, it is hit and miss, we just had a cardiac arrest in November, and that day. We had, our paramedic was in town, two of my paramedic aides were advanced from town, I was in town, and we had two police officers. So that day, just, you know, perfect storm, that day, ten o'clock in the morning.
So if you're gonna have a heart attack, you have to have it about.
You couldn't have got a better response than we got that day. So next day you get a call, you get one person.
The long-term question is, as we look to the future, then I think is, we gotta rely upon you, is when we cross the threshold where you think we should start creating a proposal to go with voters. Then we create, uh, either per diem or the full-time ambulance crew.
Yeah.
And that's something we gotta.
And then, per diem seems to be the way, though, just because, you know, obviously we don't have to pay insurance and full-time wages and, uh. There's, Tom Trichester Chief and I were talking, they, they, Trichester just went to it. You know, again, a community that's smaller than Dunmarten, uh, but couldn't get an ambulance, had an ambulance issue, so he just went, seven days a week. Ten to ten, ten hours a day, six to six. He went right into a, a lot of towns do day, you know, just cover the day shifts, but he, he did seven days a week and, uh. There's a pool, there seems to be a pool of these people out there that bounce around in these towns, so it's like fifty, sixty people. Basically a full-time job for them, but they work, day in Trichester, day in Panacher, day here, you know, they make it, so they work every day, but it benefits the town because they're not paying the.
So what did the per diem rate for his town?
Well, that's the issue, now these people looking at, say, well, I can work in Trichester.
Make more.
At eighteen dollars an hour, where Henneker's paying me fifteen dollars an hour. Gostown still has per diem people at night, you know, they're right there, so what he did, he had to bounce his rate up to, to cover all his shifts.
Yeah.
So he's up around eighteen dollars, so he, he's one of the higher ones, and because he gets, his shifts filled before, that is paying fifty. But, you know, but it, it's kind of remarkable that, you know, all these towns that are covering ambulance during the day.
Huge.
Hard to press to find somebody that does what we try to do, and unfortunately, it's just gonna be a dying breed, you know, you just can't find people and the calls increase, that's what really hurts you. You know, luckily in Dunmarten, we still have, you know, Woody can leave from town, my employee, Let's Me Go, come around, uh. We have those free shift people, we have retired person that's in town a lot, so, um, you know.
You and Woody are all trained for the ambulance?
But, you know, same with me, the days I work, I can be in Deering, Warner, Boscombe, Hopkins, Hester, you know.
Well, you need recognition from you when you ready, when it requires the threshold.
I mean, obviously I didn't budget for it this year, uh, but, you know, I can see it coming pretty soon in the near future, because it just. You know, unless you want to get all the ambulance business, you know, that's what the Tom Bradford did. Tom Bradford couldn't get any EMTs, couldn't respond during the day, so they sold their ambulance and contracted with Henneker. But these contracts, like I say, they're not cheap, you know, they're seventy-five, eighty thousand average.
Is there, is there a requirement by the state that we have an ambulance?
Someone doesn't want to have an ambulance, someone can't have an ambulance.
So they just don't know to the other towns that.
Yep.
I'm sure, I think it's a, this is a, if you, I, I can, I can't see.
I get close to the big age, I won't.
I'll tell you.
At my weight, I'm not gonna cross that off the list, don't worry. That's the biggest concern, the residents in town is ambulance.
This is a little bit, we gotta worry about crossing it off the list.
A lot of people aren't as concerned, uh, if their property burns down, they're more concerned about when they call, they want ambulance to come, you know, and, uh. Hopefully we can, you know, continue to provide that. The other thing is, you know, the ambulance generates income, and some of these towns use that income.
Okay.
Goes right in their general fund and then they pay salaries of it, so they take that cost. You know, our money goes into account to buy new ambulances and buy medical equipment, where it does the same thing we do. They split theirs, so every time they need ambulance, they, they have the money, but, you know, obviously they're more run than we do. The more run you get, obviously generates the more income.
Could we redress this, maybe cut this mid-year of this coming year and just, uh, talk about it again?
Yeah.
And, uh, we can look at some numbers and stuff like that, uh, I don't, I don't think we're ready to go too.
No, like I said, I didn't, this year, but.
I was just doing the, uh, higher rate that you took on Trichester and per diem, if we just did even a forty hour to take care of the. You know, bulk of the business time would be thirty-eight thousand or slightly.
Two people, right, did that, two?
Yeah, I did that just on one, so, twice that amount.
Yeah.
And I think it's worthwhile, I mean, not waiting till the, by, end of the budget season next year, I think maybe next mid-year, we talk about it in twenty nineteen.
Again, I mean, hiring, our costs are increasing, um, you know, this year we're almost thirty calls and without any major weather event. So it's really one of the busiest years we've ever had, because in the past, if you had a weather event, you know, either a rainstorm, windstorm, something that. And those events generate calls, you know, they generate, well, you can get twelve to twenty calls out of those storms, just chasing wire calls, trees down. Uh, and that kind of bumps your numbers up for the year, but this past year, we had no major events, we had one thunderstorm came through, I think we generated six, seven calls, but.
So if you put two people, even at per diem, the contracts don't look that bad, actually.
No, that's what, no, they don't, like I said, I've been playing with the numbers a little bit, and, uh.
Any towns ever do one per diem?
Town of Canterbury has one full-time firefighter, uh, and then they have a thirty-hour chief, but, uh, they, they do, their first responders at the Panachuk Rescue. Covers, actually, Panachuk Rescue has gone twenty-four hour shifts, which they had in the past, and that's why the, some of the costs are up to these towns. And, you know, same with Tri-Town, I don't know in Allstown and Pembroke, Tri-Town originally was hooked at Allstown and Pembroke, that's where the three towns came in. Hooked it a few years ago, went their own, firefighter runs their own ambulances now, so Tri-Town is Pembroke, Allstown. But they had the same thing, twenty-four hours a day, you know, two people on, one's a paramedic all the time, so. Those towns are gonna be paying a pretty substantial cost, uh, to, to maintain that ambulance, because that's their income, it's two towns, so.
Well.
But it's, it's one way of doing it, you know, but around us, we really don't have anybody, I don't think that we'd contract with us, maybe the Town of Hopkins then. Could, uh, I don't see Gostown doing it, Bo, you know, I've talked with Bo Chief, but, uh, they keep adding personnel, so, in Bo, but, uh, you know. It's just, it's, it's, busiest calls are EMS medicals, and any firefighter we talked on in the country. It's over sixty percent of your calls are EMS related, either power accidents, you know, straight medical calls, so that's, you know, that's, they're only both of the, the calls, I assume.
I think it's worthwhile to revisit in this body of comments.
Ooh, okay.
Chief, thank you for coming in.
Yeah.
I think at mid-year, we should just redress this.
Before we go on, while I have Woody here, can I just make sure that, cover his warrants with him?
Woody?
Woody?
You still here?
Is he still here? Woody, we, we forgot to bring up warrants for you, uh, we're spending down what you have currently in your capital reserve. We got, you're gonna want us to put a warrant on for a deposit?
We can. Put, oh, ten thousand or twenty thousand to start it again.
Well, I don't think ten's gonna get him too far.
What's that on?
That is for a, um.
The truck replacement capital.
Well, it's a capital reserve, and it's typically for, um, it's just a.
Was that like equipment replacement?
Yeah, it's just transfer station capital reserve.
I could be just wanting to go avail it to a, the met truck.
Correct.
Any dollars left in there now?
After we spend that down, there's only gonna be a cou- a couple of grand in there, so transfer station.
We spent all dollars here.
Yeah, it's transfer station equipment capital reserve.
What's it been in the years past?
I see, uh, forty thousand, that was recommended in two thousand seventeen, which I know we didn't put in.
No, except one year John and I ended up splitting it. He ended up with twenty, I ended up with twenty.
Correct, I think that was two thousand seventeen, um.
Okay.
Okay, so we'll review that when we pass the ones.
Okay, thanks.
Good.
Hey, Mr. Leonard, come on up. I guess I can't look up there anymore. You wanna talk about invasive species?
Yes. And you guys all know who the area?
Yes, who, how you doing?
We're on, we're on for backup. Oh, I think that's not a backup, no, 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 no. Now, I figured, if you guys had any detailed questions, I, I, well, this is my first time through, I figured I'd bring you.
See if the town will vote.
Okay, so, um, I provided the board with the proposed warrant articles, because we passed that, uh, warrant article for invasive plant species capital reserve. We set it up at the dollar, I did some calculations of what we, uh, expended, uh, raised from taxes, surplus from, um. Our general fund, and then matched, uh, grant revenue for a total of twenty-six thousand nine, two ninety-two is the total between what we raised from taxes. What we used from the gen- from the surplus general fund, and what we actually needed, we got matched from DES, because we did not use, we did not spend down the whole warrant. So they gave us two thousand five hundred and seventy-two, so that comes to twenty-six thousand two hundred and ninety-two dollars. And then we subtract the expenses, because we paid three, four, in, four invoices to solitude.
Okay.
Uh, so that leaves us, uh, subtract expenses, ten thousand two eighty-two, and that leaves us sixteen thousand ten dollars to deposit into the capital reserve. Fund is set up for invasive species.
Okay.
So I'll give you these two, this is the, I gave you, showed you the language, I could have modified it even further. And then this is the spreadsheet, and I confirmed these numbers with our auditor, because it was a tricky.
So nearly a sixteen thousand dollars available.
Sixteen into that, yeah, and then if you take, uh, the second warrant, and the, what was, um, requested, and it's attached to the back of yours, look. The spreadsheet from the, from Amy Smogula from DES, I don't know, did I give you one? Well, I don't know if I gave you the next, but that.
I think you emailed me talking, just looking through what I have here.
This one?
Yeah, I have that.
Okay, so basically, she said the awarded contracts will go to, um, for herbicide treatment. Uh, she's, they're recommending six thousand five hundred and twenty-eight dollars for divers assistance. They're recommending a maximum day, eight, uh, eight days at ten thousand four hundred dollars for a total project expense of sixteen thousand nine twenty-eight. Then adding or subtracting the awarded grant of twenty-five percent match, that would be four thousand two hundred and thirty-two dollars total. So when writing the article, you have to have the total amount that you need to raise and appropriate. You have to subtract the grant amount maximum, which is what, uh, four thousand, two thirty-two. And then in September of this year, the Gorham Pond Association donated a hundred and thirty dollars to the town for deposit into the general funds in hopes that the board would apply that towards the, um, total cost of the warrant. So then, the way it's written is appropriate sum of sixteen, nine twenty-eight to authorize the selecting to accept a grant from the state, New Hampshire, state of New Hampshire DES in the amount of four thousand, two thirty-two, known as the variable mill foil control grant, withdraw a hundred and thirty dollars from the unassigned fund balance surplus, and to withdraw twelve thousand, five hundred and sixty-six dollars from the invasive plant species capital reserve fund, of which we just deposited sixteen thousand, ten dollars. So the overall tax impact would be zero, and then, so both of these articles are zero impact based on the fact that we've already raised and appropriated.
And we had a good year.
And we had a good year.
We had a good year, yes.
And so the, um, the overall cost, uh, sounds again, to me, a little high, but it's pretty much because there's eight days of diving that's required.
Right.
Most of the time, they only use like one, two, three days, they really don't use the max.
He goes and hires, just to build something in.
Right.
Where are you seeing the twelve thousand? On the warrant and the warrant.
So when you, when you're taking the DES grant, a hundred and thirty dollars from surplus, that leaves what, what we need to raise or use of our own money is twelve thousand, five sixty-six, of which we just deposited sixteen thousand, ten dollars.
So if they don't use the twelve thousand, whatever the balance is left over, we'll put back in like this?
Correct, yep, yep.
Right, this is just a contingency base on if we have any, this, um.
Did you show them this?
No, I haven't.
This is, this is what we had for twenty eighteen on the pond for the mill foil. And this is what Amy, Amy and Seth Lou and I.
And again.
At the end of the season?
Mm-hmm.
Mm-hmm. Because at the beginning of the season, it was far less than that, right?
Right, this was after the bloom, and then they did, they did the treatment, and this was the areas where they treated, where the red dots are.
Yeah.
And now, technically, we shouldn't have anything there, but we won't know on the bloom until April, May, you know, whatever.
So there's a good chance we're not gonna use much of this twelve thousand.
Much, if any, right.
Yep.
We didn't even use any divers this last year.
We're going through the process to get the grant.
Just covering our budget.
Well, if it blooms and it goes crazy, you have money to pay for divers.
Exactly, exactly, and we stay in the loop with the state money and the state grant group, which went up from twenty percent to twenty-five percent, so.
Lean, do these have to be worded to vote to raise and appropriate, not just appropriate?
And that's the way the attorney has rewritten my warrants, that we have to vote to raise and appropriate.
Because it's already been raised, actually.
Okay, okay, well, I can question that.
Can you question that? That amount of money's already been raised from last year, so we're just appropriating.
So vote to appropriate, okay, I'm gonna, I'll check that, it makes sense, Dave, thank you. So I did get the numbers that you see on this spreadsheet from Amy Smogula with this chart.
Yeah.
This is actually, I had not seen the bids, but it's Solitude, and then they had two divers that bid on, two companies that bid on the diving. What was awarded, again, we went with that two-year treatment per Procellicor herbicide. And in the, um, two-year performance assurance, they did say that they assure that, they're assured of ninety-five percent control of the variable mill foil and through the following growing season in two thousand nineteen. In the event two thousand eighteen treatment has greater than ninety-five percent control variable mill foil and requires a follow-up treatment in two thousand nineteen, Sepro will provide Solitude product at no additional charge to treat these areas, so.
That's existing contract.
That's a proposed contract, but page four and five are a little confusing for me, and I've, I've got an email, four and five actually referenced the old contract, so tasks one through five talk about twenty-five thousand, seventeen hundred, nine hundred and fifty-four, total cost of twenty-nine. So I think this is a mistake, I don't think we should be signing this.
This is a new contract coming before two thousand nineteen.
Which is this, one page.
Or is it summary page?
There is, well, I want to patch you, patch you.
Right.
Correct. That's, so, so these numbers coincide with what Amy Smogula's gave us for total cost. But I want to clarify that what the board or the town is going to sign is actually just this last page and not page four and five.
That was previous year.
A previous year contracts.
I believe what's gonna happen next is we'll prove everything. We'll contact Amy, contact the vendors, you have another packet.
Right.
And all that stuff still in it for two thousand nineteen, you're signing saying we're gonna pay.
Who's the arbitrator that's gonna determine if it's more than ninety-five percent, five percent?
Yes.
Okay.
Amy, Amy has it, yeah, she's, does as well, she's down here at least a couple, three times.
And I think they do that so that there's an impartial opinion, that she's not benefiting from it, she's looking for the mill foil, and if the season's too high, then we'll get the material or solution for free.
Mm-hmm, okay. We would still have to pay to have it administered, but.
I remember that portion.
Remember that portion, yeah, it's like, whatever's possible, if you don't pay that, we just pay Solitude for it, so.
No, the thing is, at the bottom line and end of the day, I like the estimated two thousand nineteen tax impact, zero.
Yes, has a nice ring to it.
I think the voters. I think the voters will like to see that for one year as well.
Right, next year, maybe it's a stronger, because it's a pretty good contract.
Right, but if we don't have anything this year, that sixteen's still gonna be sitting there waiting to be used.
Right.
And the one thirty, by the way, was from the Gorham Pond residents, not the association.
Okay.
Just from the Gorham Pond residents, we had yard sales and everybody kicked into the pot, so.
Yeah, I remember that.
Yeah, yeah, that was second year, not as much of a turnover, because we didn't have it on.
So the only, only thing that we're waiting on is the contract, Lean wants to verify the numbers, it makes sense with the new contract, you can't be saying anything.
He's back January second, I sent Pete an email, and he replied, I'm on town, he'll be returning on the second, so.
I, I agree with your strategy of making sure the amount's enough in there so we get the state grant, a substantial proportion, by having the budget higher, not to have to submit the state grant, that's a smart move.
He does that, yeah.
So I'd rather put the money back into the revolving fund if we don't use it, but the thing is, we're covered if we need it, but at the same time, the, the chemical's supposed to work, so.
When I heard, when I heard Amy looked at it this fall.
Yeah.
It just couldn't find no mill foil to find anywhere.
No trace.
Our people went in there also, went to the pond, zero mill foil. Our people checked the other four ponds in Ben Barton, zero, zero, so right now, we're a big zero.
And we know, we found no invasive species on any of the Lake Coast separate issue, but the Lake Coast inspections, both in and out, zero mill foil, so.
Good, good.
Might have it contained finally.
Who's gonna speak? Are you gonna speak this year or two?
Sure.
Okay.
Well, it's an easy year, of course you can.
Hey, you gonna wear, are you coming with a white hat saying, I'm the good guy?
I'm the good guy, wear the white flag, zero, with a big zero on it. All right, great.
Good gentleman, thank you.
All right.
Any, any, want any questions?
Any questions?
Okay.
All right, thank you very much, thanks for your time.
Lean will be in touch, we just gotta make sure we get that final contract.
Yes.
The numbers have to be there.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thanks, guys, thank you.
Recreation Commission, we kind of reviewed before the meeting.
Yeah, let's, let's do it public though.
All right, wait a minute. I'm gonna leave my hand there.
Just to see what it was and what they're gonna do with that.
Yeah, they want a flat budget, Bob, for park restoration. But the thing is, if you notice, they did not do a December trip because they didn't get enough for the fill of the bus, the minimum fill of the bus. So, the thing is, um, something, when we go into deliberations, we may wanna talk about how we're gonna handle this line in the future, I think there are other alternatives we can consider that would benefit the town as a whole, whether it's maybe a dozen people going, or a couple dozen people going to Boston.
I do hear really good feedback on that bus trip, but it's the time of the year, they've got, had bus trips where there's only like two or three seats open, and it's a maximum forty-eight, so we have a waiting list, but they need a minimum of like twenty or twenty-four in order to justify the trip, and I think they had sixteen, and the weather was iffy, so they decided to cancel.
We'll leave it at school maybe for another year and see if they use it.
Yeah.
What's the dollar amount on that bus trip, Lou?
Twenty, uh, twenty-two.
They have.
Oh, eighteen hundred.
Eighteen, and that would cover two trips, they are trying to incorporate another trip for like springtime.
Or have to have fireworks.
Exactly, exactly. Want any comments? So we're gonna wait to deliberate on that.
Yeah, I think we'll deliberate it.
Okay.
I, I think they would be wanting to make this spring trip earlier and eliminate the.
Well, that's what the email says.
Yeah. For, yeah, that's what, I think that's what I read, where they wanted to eliminate the Christmas trip.
Yeah.
With the spring one, you know, so it's something we can talk about later on to see.
Okay, we'll put that aside and move on. Hold on, I'm sorry. We had a couple of questions, and I think Lean made a background theory. All right, um, essentially it was just a wage scale versus a full-time, part-time, and the thing is, um, in the budget you were proposing, there may have been some confusion, was previously approved, boards, two boards prior. As far as when you have a part-timer, you were keeping him at a single step. And so there may have been some confusion, but I'm, we're here to hear any potential solutions, and I'm sure we can find a solution. So, go ahead, I'll give you the floor.
You did talk about setting up steps for the, for the part-time position.
Right, and I think your proposal originally, how many years ago was that?
Well, we've started this in two thousand fourteen or so, thirteen, fourteen, and then we've expanded on the positions within the department.
Right.
I think as far as, from far back as two thousand sixteen to current, there's always been the.
Part-timers.
Part-timers were always at the end of their scale. We have expanded and added, changed a police secretary, which was at the end of the scale, and added a police detective.
At a higher rate because of.
At step two.
That was a reorganization.
Exactly. So the question, the question will come, um, I'll give you an example, at the transfer station, we bring new people in at a lower step, even part-timers, and then we bring them up as soon as they get the experience, you might tell me if I'm wrong.
Well, it's depending on their experience.
Because some way higher with more experience, so we.
Step one.
Right.
Right, right, and that's what we did with the detective, put her in step two when we created this position.
But that was for salary offset compared to a patrolman, because she's, a detective is much more valuable than a patrolman.
Essentially, it was, it was the same scale as a patrolman, because it wasn't, it wasn't a part-time scale for somebody who fit in that type of position.
Right.
Where it was a regularly scheduled part-time. Personally, I, I, I think as a, as a matter of policy, you probably should have a multi-step wage scale for all the positions.
That's what I was thinking too.
Well, that's what Mike, Mike had suggested, if we do it for one branch, we should do it on all of them. And then we're only talking about the people that don't have it, or like the ballot clerks and that type of thing that, you know, come in, and some volunteer their time and some just come in for limited hours.
But I look at a patrolman that you've had as part-time for working for the town for years, much more valuable than someone who's been just coming off the street, coming in.
You don't have no argument with me on that.
Yeah.
Can you work on those wage scales and get back to us with them, to fill them in? Yeah. Step one, step two, and step three.
Generally, when we, when we first set up the wage scales, because everybody was, although, for the positions that were, for the people who were at the top step, what we did is we just stepped back five percent, and so that's all I would do, is to take this, this particular, uh, the part-time step, whatever it is, take five percent back would be step two, five percent back is step one, so we have one, two.
So ten percent back for step one and five percent.
Well, it's five percent per step, so it's a little different than.
Would we still, would we still be competitive as we recruit for part-timers, the last question I have?
Yeah, I, I think if we, if we bring in a part-timer who's already academy trained.
Yeah.
Then we want to, we want to start him at step two.
Gotcha.
You know, somebody who's brand new.
And that'll give you choices too, when you're bringing them in, say, listen, we're gonna bring you in at step two or whatever, so, just like we did with some employees.
Exactly.
So Lean, do you feel comfortable doing those numbers through, have that step?
Yeah, I can show him to him. Now, I had listed here also part-time police secretary, kinda left that in there, but I'm noticing that because that was a part-time position, it was in step three, I think we should move that into the same step wage scale as my other secretary, part-time secretary. So that this rate would actually be step two, and then the step three would be higher.
Whatever, whatever the wage scale is, that should be maintained, any year that you, that you do a cola, that wage should be adjusted, whether it's used or not.
Oh, absolutely.
Where is yours, Lean?
Well.
I have to talk.
I know what the difference is.
Yeah, the part-time, yes, and so we have three, step one is, um, with the new CPI would be seventeen oh four, step two would be seventeen ninety, which is a five percent increase between the two steps, then another step would be eighteen seventy-nine. So I think I need to move that here and then increase the step three secretary.
She wants to match this column up here.
So it's consistent.
Yeah, you made the decision.
Which is okay, because right now it's a fat secretary.
Yeah, so, but your, my question here is, take this and subtract and subtract, and then.
It should be increasing, which we don't, we don't have secretary anyways.
Great, I'm gonna do that, but what about police officers?
Well, two officers. The, the part-time.
Do you think that rate today is good for step three, and then back it?
Or we'd go in somewhere, split the difference, put it like a step two and then.
Will you be changing his whole budget if you do that, so I think you should go backwards like you suggested.
Right, leave that there, and subtract five and five.
That's what I would do, of course, I'd always be.
Otherwise, you're gonna change his whole budget.
Again, given the part-time office is some kind of an, of an increase, but.
Yeah.
But we did do the two percent, right, so.
But based on, based on that being the top step, the way I would set it, I would back five percent to step two, and then, I would think that, that the current step, step three, drop it back five percent to step two, and five percent of that to step one. That's what we initially did when we first set it.
Set it up, yep.
Except for the secretary, she's gonna line up with her part-time secretary. Or we'll have to bring your part-time secretary down.
She, he doesn't really have, so it's not gonna be a problem.
She missed that one. At some point, we could have a new part-time secretary.
Yep.
It's true, you don't know how these things are gonna work out, so you gotta kind of be ready for. I don't know how you do without it, to tell you the truth, it's a lot of work.
Well, well, it is, but, you know, when you take a look at what, at the options with personnel available, we make it work.
Now, would you do the same with your police detective? Yes, back it off five percent?
What you, what you have is, that was the patrolman's wage, so the, the current wages she's at is step two. So you could, you could just copy and paste the patrolman's wages, step one, step two, step three, into that detective position.
Which is what's on page, which is what is on page two. Those wages right there in gray scale are exactly what's on the part-time police officer, I didn't give that page to you today, it was with the last attachment.
But that's what I'd do, detective is an assignment, it's a patrol, patrol office position that's assigned to that particular.
All right, let's close, it's not the right one, it's all right.
Yeah, but look at the, look at the step two, this is spot on, oh, very, very good.
So when he hired her, he hired her in step two of the full-time police officer.
Right, but they don't match each other if you look at it.
Matter, do a couple pennies off.
That was, uh, two thousand eighteen.
I mean, you could make the.
Which is correct.
It should be the same.
Oh, this is, that's twenty seventeen, that's why I downed it.
Right.
Okay, because you got twenty seventeen on it, oh, you got twenty seventeen here too.
So what you're looking at is actually two percent, the twenty-three eighteen, twenty-three eighties in step two.
Is the two percent?
And plus the two percent for two thousand nineteen, which would put them at the twenty-four, twenty-eight, which is identical to the police officer full-time, step one, two, and three.
Okay.
Exactly. And that's rated detective.
I think it'd be a.
Oh, it's a part-time detective.
But still, the detective position, it's, it's a patrolman. And a detective is an assignment for patrolmen.
Okay.
And this, and she happens to be part-time.
Right.
But we wanna keep the, the wage.
So if it was a full-time detective, if you ever had one, it would be a different wage.
It would be the same, same way, same scale, yeah, it would just be an assignment.
But I think this will probably help morale, is if you broaden the new patrolman with no experience, you could bring him at a lower rate than someone of your season one, and you would expect less out of him and more out of your season. you could bring him at a lower rate than someone of your seasoned one, and you would expect less out of him and more out of your seasoned one.
As you would in a fixed unit.
Right, but if, for the program, for, you know, if you pay him the same rate, you know, it's not really fair to someone who's been there doing all the job faithfully for the years.
There's a difference between somebody who does thirty, forty and a half hours a week versus ten.
Can I ask a question? Do you have any part-timers that are gonna be affected by this step one, two, and three scale?
I have three part-time officers.
Okay, and are they...
Besides Laura.
Are they longer-term than three-year or where?
The most recent, most current one I have is Jeff, and I think he's, he's gonna be at the five.
Five, yeah, okay, so then, then we'll be okay, anyone going...
Doesn't want to take anything away from anybody.
Correct, I know.
No, I mean, it would, it would be somebody that was gonna hire, I'd wanna start him at least step two anyway, so he really should be at step three. He's a full-time academy certified, he's assigned now for the, for the fishing game, so he should be at top step regardless.
Okay.
Yeah, they just promoted him too, right?
Yeah, yeah, he brings a lot of, a lot of talent to, to the agency, so.
How's your new patrolman working out?
We're happy to have him.
Good.
Happy to have him.
He went right to work, he graduated on a Friday, went to work on a Monday, am I correct?
Yeah. Yeah, I think he's gonna, he's gonna spend a little time down on Tenny Hill Road too.
It's not the fella. Okay, Jim, any questions? That's all we had, Dan.
Solution, not a problem.
There you go. I had, I also sent over a request today about my...
Yeah, since you're right here, we'll talk about it right now, it's in the mailbox, but I'm gonna go and take a little bit of, right, go into the mailbox on his request.
I have no problem with it, Dan.
Bob, do you have a...
I don't have a problem.
Okay.
All we, all we ask people to do is put in writing to us before the end of the month, which you did, so.
And so, manage your time appropriately and execute it sometime in the month of January.
Yeah, we use a January, good.
Mike, yeah, thank you. So have fun.
What were we talking about?
I understand you just recovered from a cold.
Vacation.
You look like a little, you're running a little ragged. Either you lack of sleep or you had a cold.
No, yeah, it, the stamina's not back yet.
Yeah, you seemed a little bit off, so go home, get some rest.
Okay.
If they give it to us.
No. I'm not the tapes anymore.
That's why you're sitting up there.
Have a great day.
Sailing a lot.
Yeah, see? They gave it to Lane again.
No, 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 no.
Oh, by the way, you heard about the oil, the oil storage container on Mansion Road?
Yeah, do you need one?
Nope.
Cause there's a free one down there.
I, exactly, exactly. It wasn't dumped, obviously someone's trying to sell it.
We're gonna bring it over to your house.
Things I was gonna kind of, kind of have to make a barbecue out of it.
Yeah. You guys, a good excuse to get attracted, you can use it for diesel storage.
There you go.
That's what the welders on the pipeline do, they have, like they, they make the barbie, like mylin, and all a bunch of them made like that.
Oh, yeah, yeah, sorry, enjoy.
Somebody, somebody will find it as a traitor.
There you go. Especially with the right word on there, advertising, right, free.
Price is right.
Yeah, it was a little concerned early, a little, some of the alarms went off, and I thought, they thought it was legal dumping, which obviously apparently...
No, it comes from where the house is down.
Exactly.
Usually when they're, it would be at the other end of Mansion Road, it was gonna be legal dumped.
Your Bob's in it.
No, I'm on it, but...
I, but close enough. Okay, thank you again. Okay, now I get to go to do a mailbox, so that was a good start into, into the mailboxes. All right, let's start off, first thing, we had a planning board, they gave us notice of decisions, and this is just information only. There's a packet of decisions were made, there were basically some subdivisions which were approved. There was a, the, the planning board approved the coffee shop, so it's a go-ahead, there was some conditions which they're working on. But overall, I thought the planning board was moving out smartly with a couple of items, so that's, those are just information-only items. Along with that, we also have a, from the building inspector, just a summary sheet of what's been going on in town. And just an FYI, so it's...
I read that.
You read that? Okay, Dave, you, you were commenting on that earlier too.
Yep.
So thank you for that.
Yeah, I really like to see this because it gives us some good information.
Exactly, so we're not, we're not sitting out there, members of public talk to us and we don't know what's going on in town.
Before you go on the planning board, did they approve the Falcon Heights three lot subdivision?
Yes.
Yes, they did.
And they had enough area, land, and frontage?
Frontage was not an issue, according to the survey, they had just over fifteen acres.
So their, their new survey showed that, cause it was just under that previous.
Right.
Okay, I saw them for sale, so I just wanted to check that.
I'll give you a moment to review that for another second.
Single meeting?
Single meeting, yes, okay.
Wasn't it two?
No, Falcon, Falcon, which one was single, it was one of them single.
Three lots subdivision.
So there was two meetings.
It was two meetings, a lot line adjusted for Kaminsky was...
That was the one meeting.
One meeting, cause it was like a little...
And that was the other Kaminsky, was it not related to me, no relationship to me?
Okay. That's the only question I had. I knew they were missing one requirement, looking at our old town tax maps without having a survey, so I was wondering about that. I seen bought for sale.
Okay, the other item we have, we have an information item of some geotechnical warming work on power lines by New England Power on existing right-of-way, they obviously wanna do some testing. Sending up drilling equipment, performing drilling and then breaking down, removing equipment, and it's about two days. The only thing is in wetlands area, Lee, this is information only, but doesn't have, there's nothing from the state.
It's already been, it has to be submitted to the town clerk.
Okay.
She had a wetlands one last week that she...
Yeah, they just updated their twenty nineteen wetlands for ten thousand dollar maximum for wetland impact already to us.
Okay.
We signed it last week.
Yeah, so, this is an FYI, I believe.
Yeah, and I'd like to keep that in the basket in case the one that north...
No, that's next, that's, that's for next week. We, we need to recall, overlook is nearing completion, and I may have mentioned this last week, but we're waiting on a, they wanna come in and there's about a hundred fifty thousand dollar bond remaining for the completion of the task, to finish the road.
Yep.
It's gonna be more than likely reduced to a significantly, maybe ninety percent less amount for the remaining items. We're gonna take some guidance from the road agent as he comes in, how much he requires to make sure that they complete some of the, this real vegetation areas.
And I read the engineering report there, Mike, is he coming out for final in the spring before we do it, or how's he...
Well, the thing is, we're gonna retain, still retain some dollars.
For vegetation?
Yes, and the seeding and stuff like that.
So one of the questions the board had last week was where the monuments set, and that's what the building inspector has reported that they've been set.
Right. And Jeff will be present for that bond reduction here, and so if you have any questions on it from the road agent, because he's gonna maintain.
He talked a little bit about it last week.
Correct. So that's still a work in progress, we'll leave that for, that's Lee and Smile.
For next week.
Yeah. And my inbox is getting, oh my God, I'm almost over. Box.
So, okay.
Bob, to you.
I read this.
Okay, just, okay, I just wanna make sure you have enough. Don't wanna overlook anybody, I'm gonna open up for public comment now. Mister... Anything?
No.
Okay.
Sitting here by myself?
It's okay, I'll bring that, bring it back to the board and I'll start with Dave.
The only thing I had is I read through some emails from the town attorneys in reference to Kelsey Road, and there seems to be some new agreement other than what I've seen on Kelsey Road and the maintenance and turnaround at the end. Now, that was stated in the email, but I haven't seen a copy of that since your last visit out to the site. So it was stated in the email that there was some new agreement made after the board member had gone out to visit the end of Kelsey Road.
The, there was no, the only agreement that was made had nothing to do with the plowing, it was about where we're gonna put some of the snow to facilitate, pushing snow instead of in front of the barn door a little bit further past, but the plowing will go per court order. We're following the law of the land. In other words, I think it's...
So there was an agreement made at the end of Kelsey Road?
There was no agreement, no agreement was made.
Hey, our town attorney stated that there was a new agreement.
I haven't seen anything.
No.
No.
I haven't.
The only thing we made, we, it wasn't an agreement, but the thing is, we just talked about the placement of snow, instead of in front of the barn door, we're gonna push it back. That had no bearing on the road per se, but the road is gonna be plowed, as I explained to Mr. Guy, the road will be plowed per, as we would maintain it, per order of, as a road, is it's, it's the court has decided that, and that's the only, that's not an agreement, that was, that's basically following the law.
Without going really into it, cause you know, it's, we, the minutes have been sealed, but somebody perceived there was an agreement, but there was no agreement made.
Okay, cause in the emails, it read like there was an agreement from our town attorney. And so if there's an agreement, it's a public road, it should be public.
It's the same question that one of the board members raised.
Okay.
Thinking something was done, but that was perceived by one side, but it wasn't, so.
Okay, so there's no new agreement that's been made?
Absolutely not.
For the public, I think that's important, cause if it's a public road and there was some sort of agreement, that should be public, I would think.
Absolutely, but the thing is, there was no new agreement.
You read down through the different emails from the different attorneys, it reads like there's a new agreement.
That's what Bob thought too.
But you thought that as well.
I thought the same.
But I'm not the only one that read it that way, I was like...
Just clarification.
They talked about an agreement, but then, you know, normally there's an attachment, and there was no attachment, so it was like I never saw.
Thought I was holding someone's feet to the fire, but that was just something that was perceived by one side.
Okay.
And leave that for anything in any concern.
No, that's it.
Okay, Bob, to you.
No, the only thing I'll say is I thank the other two board members on the, on the select board for, you know, looking at the town properties and stepping up to do something about starting to get things repaired in town instead of just letting it run down so that it becomes almost impossible to repair, you know? I mean, I can remember hearing Jeff a few years ago, oh, three or four years ago, you know, saying he'd give up the painting of his building for another year, even though it really needed it, cause they had to struggle with moving monies around with the budget. So, you know, it's important, I guess, to the individuals that are department heads to see that the buildings are taken care of or things are addressed and...
Even, even the townspeople, I know, I have a better feeling driving through town knowing that, you know, looking at these buildings, we're trying to maintain it for a longer period of time too, not a, just a, not just a one or two-year deal, you know?
No, it's, it's an investment in the town's property, you know, and if we push it off too long, then it almost becomes impossible to try to do, we've handled a whole bunch of projects this year, which has been unusual, you know?
And when it comes to the end of our budget at the end of this year, beginning of next year, I'd like to look at, you know, trying to keep our, keep our program going and looking at a lot of different things we can do for the town properties, still is coming here.
Now, I'm gonna take it to me, one of the things I talked to Lee about, and I talked to the fire chief earlier, it appears that it's late in the season, we're not gonna be able, the cost of any roof repair for the fire station, we're gonna have to live with it for the next, for the winter at least. We'll have to address that in the spring. And everything from possibly relocating as an antenna to looking at the roof, and the bids are kinda high, so we're gonna have to put it out to bid to get an actual, more than one bid on it. So he, chief is aware of that, and he knows that he's gonna have to survive another winter, another winter without it, that's a work in progress.
Cause I noticed you have a, a little bit of a surplus in budgets, and as you have monies, they hit a few buckets?
Those white, those white ones from Ace Hardware. But that's, that's something we'll be addressing, making sure we have a layout and a space for that in our budget, as our maintenance budget. And Lee, I'm gonna go to Sheriff's House on some of the things we've been working on this week.
Okay.
Things, just share briefly about the alarm system, briefly.
Right, so just to get touch on that roof bid, I think because I'm hearing conflicting stories with the town officials, it might be important for us to get our engineer, an engineer to look at the roof trusses, because that's where all my hard work of trying to get different bids to give a price to repair this work, they've all stepped back and either said we have to insulate it and then replace the whole thing, and then the feedback from the town officials is that they're not designed to hold the snow, so I feel like we're partly putting the cart before the horse if we try to fix the roof and we don't look at the structure itself. This would be a wise investment for us to look at it engineering-wise, because I'm hearing...
Because some spare steel was caught in the yard over there. I'm sorry. Okay. If we look at that, it might bring up a bigger envelope than we wanna look at right now.
Yeah, so, okay, and then this past couple of weeks, we have had numerous calls to the fire, highway garage for system fail calls.
Even after you got his second line in?
I was informed today that he's still getting that call. I've got...
And the second line is in lean now?
Correct, but I need to find out, based on the email correspondence from All-Star, that they're not very... I don't, I don't wanna say anything, cause I'm, I'm, and being recorded here, but they just haven't been very professional. And so I'm trying to take a little deeper look into it, find out for sure if the lot, the new line that was installed has a new line from the outside of the building to the phone line inside, cause I'm, my understanding is because there's no heat...
Might be on the building, but nobody put, put it to the unit inside.
Correct, so before I jump to conclusion with one, with the response that I've gotten from one side, I've got an email into Dunbar Telephone to find out if the line inside was installed as well, because Jeff today said that...
If you do call them and they put a new line to the building, and it's up to us or somebody else to do it to the phone.
Correct.
They'll also do that for a fee, it's my recommendation as a board member is just to let them do it.
Just get it done, exactly.
And just bill the town for their time to put this on.
Exactly, exactly.
After you check on that, I think if, if, if that doesn't solve it, we'd probably like the alarm company person to come in and speak to the board. And even if he has to bill us for his time to come in front of us, we could get him in front of us like you said, Mike, because...
Because the thing is, it's, it's, it's more than that, Dave.
We bought a system and now we don't have the maintenance, you're right.
Right, and it's warranted to be functional.
But I'm just saying, if he says, I'm not gonna come unless I can bill you for my time, I'd rather pay him for an hour of time.
Right.
Put him first on the agenda and get him in front of the board so we can get some answers and not have Lee have to pay, play that phone tag with him, so.
It's not really...
After you check with the phone company, Lee, and if they do everything that they need to do in our building to make sure it's attached to the unit, and it's still, if it just still doesn't function, then...
Yeah, if it's, if it's, if it's a problem on his part.
So I need that, yeah, so I need to find out...
But if it's at the library as well, it's not just there, so...
Correct, yeah, so I wanna get that confirmation from Dunbar Telephone first.
Make sure we have everything on our side, it's supposed to be done as per specification.
Right.
Including creating a telephone line.
Lee, if they're gonna go down and check that, Billy, can you have them check the library as well? Just let them know the library's getting the same coded problem. You know, cause just, cause the lines to the building, normally the person that owns the building takes that right.
They already put a second line into the library, they already put a second line into the...
Oh, cause we were just testing.
Testing it. And obviously the test, and why waste money when we find out this is not over yet? So let's, but the thing is, the thing is, you pay for a product, if this is your home and it didn't work, you paid good money to put alarms in your home and it doesn't work, you'd be, we'd be emotional about it, but we don't have to be emotional about it, we just have to be smart.
So, so currently there's a hundred and sixty dollars that he is requesting the town pay for services for showing up at the town, at garage on two different days, so...
Who's that?
The installer.
The installer. And the problem's still not solved, it's a little frustrating, so...
So he's asking us to pay a bill of a hundred and sixty?
Yeah.
And we don't have the problem solved?
Correct.
So we're not gonna pay that, obviously.
That's the way I feel, but if you read the emails on my desk, they're not very professional.
Well, why don't you make a copy of the emails for us for next meeting?
Okay.
All right, and bring them in with us.
With, with the facts from the Dunbar telephone too.
Yep.
Jeff said one of the, one of the emails, one of the bills Jeff could live with as far as the service call, it was our fault. Something to do with this...
Well, um...
I thought it was one he was happy, he couldn't accept.
No, it was the single line.
Right.
And he went back in and supposedly did something to connect the single line, then it was discovered that the problem may have started from the existing phone line because of the corrosion on the outlet, but I don't know if the outlet was just replaced and not the entire line, so that could still be... So I'm not sure what, why we're still getting the code if we have added a second line.
Yeah, check first the telephone company, make sure they do everything they can.
Yeah.
And if we owe them bills, it might be a good way to get him in here, say, you know, Thursday night at the selectmen's meeting, we'll have a check ready if you, the selectmen, wanna review it with you.
Mm-hmm, okay.
And it'll get him in front of us to get the check and just talk with him then maybe.
Well, the thing is, my, my question is, why do you, why do you pay for a system that doesn't work?
Right. Just still have Pam sign it. We've had no, we've had no use of that system so far, so.
Jeff says every day they go in there and they reset the um panel.
I mean, if I if I pay for something, I want my money back.
And another fact too, which I can't figure out, and I've got, I've got the same, a similar question with the Dunbar telephone, is that in that email response, he says that alarm, when those alarms go off, should have been calling an eight-hundred number or a toll-free number, eight-seven-seven toll-free number. Yet our, our long-distance carrier charged us three pages worth of repeat dialing through the new telephone line, so I just
It's bizarre.
Something just doesn't fit, I'm just still trying to figure out.
It's bizarre.
So you're gonna ask the telephone?
I already did, I said I've gotten twenty, over twenty-five dollars worth of long-distance telephone calls for, it might be a hundred calls for a second, a second, a second, unfortunately, we have a good long-distance carrier, we only get, pay pennies, but it's all these pieces, when I try to ask All-Star for an answer, I don't get a very polite response, or it just, it's not a professional way to.
We'll print those responses for us for next meeting.
Yeah.
Dude, you had a comment, value added.
Well, I I had a, well, a couple of things, but I had a similar situation happen to me years ago, where um I was getting charged for calls at every.
Second.
Every second.
Yeah.
And uh I had pages and pages of them, as a matter of fact, the police from Rains called me on a Sunday morning, asked me to please stop harassing the lady there that lived in town, and I said, I'm not doing anything, well, where's my television's connection on the phone? And it was dialing, and I explained to the phone company, they said I had to pay it, and I said, well, how could I possibly dial that number in a second? You know, so they agreed with me and he took it all off, so it's something to do with the signal is, right? As far as the the All-Star, or whoever installed that, I would assume that we shouldn't even have, the town shouldn't have to pay them to come and talk to you, unless it's our fault. If it proves to be the system's fault, we shouldn't be obliged to pay that.
But that's why I'm trying to find out if it is in fact our fault first before.
We're gonna, we're gonna ascertain if it's uh if it's our telephone line, we'll look for corrosions on the internal line, make sure we have a nice clean cover.
Right, but when they have, when when they, upon the installation, they should have uh let us know that it needed a separate line.
They did, and the thing is, it was, so we're doing it from arrears.
Oh, I never, I.
It was recommended to have a separate line, so.
Okay, from past meetings that I've heard, they hadn't, so, okay, all right. It was kinda confusing, Leo, it came, long story short, there was a recommendation and then it kinda went. By the wayside. Yeah, right, it was overlooked. You can use it without, or, you know, and we're finding out it's not very useful. It's not without.
No, that's uh, thank you, anything else, Lean?
Um, yes, uh, just one item, I will be working New Year's Day to work with the CPA, and I'll be using that humiliating day as a floater, which I expect to take on January eighteenth on a Friday.
Any other unused days for you?
Uh, yes, but um I don't have, know when I'll be able to take the time off between now and next year.
January first, you lose it.
How about Saturday, Sunday? No, that's what I mean, can't we give you an extension on those additional days?
I.
If you put your writing in a request.
I can do that.
Why don't you do that?
How much do you have?
I I know I, on my payroll stub, it's ten hours, I think I have more, but I'd have to cross-reference the sheets from the payroll. But it's probably at least around two days.
So I think you did request last year for a couple of days, didn't you?
Mm-hmm.
Why don't you do it again this year?